Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have two guest readers and we're going to start first with Jayden. Jayden, if you would come down. Jayden is a student at Maple Elementary and his social studies teacher, Ms. Cook, submitted his informational essay entitled "The Northwest Coast People," because, and I quote, "that his writing is easy to read and has a very unique style." Are you ready?
North Americans all descended from the same ancestors, however, they adapted differently to their viruums. But to know more about their history, we need to go back 1.4 million years ago. Our great ancestor Homo erectus, or the upright man, have started to travel across the eastern hemisphere. A small population of Homo erectus went into southern Africa and evolved into Homo ergaster. Ergaster developed less hair on its body, an adaptation that instead of cooling down in the shade and continuing to run on, something we see on us today. We also have something in common with them. We both can look at animal prints and know where the animal went. Ergaster then evolved into Homo sapiens sapiens, Comagnum, or the early human. These people stayed in the areas till the next 200 years, I mean 200,000 years. Then left to either find mates or find more land- surprising population. These humans met with the Neanderthals, our closest cousin. They would die out or mate to extinction by the end of the Ice Age. But we adapted and a small portion of early humanity went into land bridge of Asia and North America. These are the ancestors of all Native Americans. Some early humanity went into Sahool, an ancient land bridge between Asia and Australia, but that's a different story. One of the first to come out of the groups are the Northwest Coast people. These descendants were called the Northwest Coast people, like I already stated, the Southeast people, the Southwest people, the Eastern Woodlands people, and the Great Plains people. But for now, we are going to focus on the Northwest people and their life.
Good job, thank you.
That is just his introduction. His report is very thorough. Excellent job.
So Jayden, is this just something you're interested in, or do you write like this about every topic?
Um, kind of, yeah. I just had a really good amount of evidence to support it. I usually don't have that amount of evidence.
Awesome.
Thank you. Our next writer is Sophia. Sophia, would you come on down? Sophia is also, this is also a social studies piece from Sophia and her, she's a student at Elm Street. Her teacher selected her Democracy and Dictatorship essay because it's a beautifully written piece that demonstrates the thoughts, concerns, and viewpoints of a fifth-grade student. She demonstrates, demonstrates an understanding of and identified belief of our democratic system and the need for unity in order to preserve it.
Democracy and dictatorship are two very different governments. I don't think they have many comparisons. We, the USA, have it right here, but we are taking advantage of it by whining about our President Donald J. Trump. A democracy government doesn't only have one leader, they have more people who make the decisions. While in a dictatorship government, one selfish ruler decides if you can have food or water. In comparison, democracy and dictatorship both have someone who does not like their leader. In the future, if we, the USA, don't change our ways with hating Donald Trump, we will become an anarchy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Camper. And now, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to invite down Jasmine Moore. Marie, I'm sorry. Please come down. Ms. Timko, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, you're okay.
Just so you should see you here.
I'm just here for moral support.
Awesome. If you didn't have the opportunity to see Jasmine's work in the hallway before you came in, this superintendent's certificate of recognition is for outstanding achievement in art. And it reads, "In recognition of outstanding effort and excellence in performance at the Ohio Governor's Student Art Show and bringing pride to your school and family as a model of leadership and excellence in the arts." And I'll let Ms. Timko tell you a little bit more about the Governor's Art Show, which is a pretty big deal. And as well to have Jasmine give a little feedback of what it's like to have your work on display at the Governor's Show. So congratulations to you.
I'm Ms. Timko. For those of you who did not know me, I'm the art teacher here at Harvey High School. Governor's Show is actually a really big show. It's kind of like athletics where if you get through regionals, you get to go to states and then nationals. For my four years here, Jasmine's actually our first student to get into Governor's Show. We always put in at least 15 to 20 pieces and this was our lucky year with Jasmine. So it's an honor, very exciting. But we took her artwork down in the beginning of March. She went to Brush High School. They had three local artists go through all of the artwork in northeast Ohio region. And then from there, if you were selected, you were taken down to Columbus at the State House. And then at that point, they do another state judging. And so they keep going and then after that, you can win scholarships and whatnot. So we're just super excited to at least get to regionals and make it to states. But Jasmine's an amazing student. She's always on time for school. She's focused on her work. I can only just praise her and I'm super excited to have her in my room and to see where she's going to go from here. So hopefully next year, we'll have more pieces. That's you.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to extend my congratulations not only to you, Jasmine, but also to Ms. Timko. If you've not visited an art classroom in a while, I recommend, highly recommend you come to Harvey High School and visit Ms. Timko's classroom. She does some amazing things and we're always asking for things from her and her students. But they do amazing work and we're proud to start this new legacy here at Harvey High School with our art students in the Governor's Show. And we're very proud of you for representing Harvey High School and Paintsville City Schools and to you as well, Ms. Timko. Thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication to our students.
Thank you.
Hold on. Has the Governor's Show concluded yet, or did the jury portion at least?
The jury portions are, yeah. So it ever made it through states is down, actually hanging at states and some of the, does go to Washington DC.
Okay. Jasmine, did you get a chance to go down there at all? No? Oh, okay. That would be exciting.
It would be.
Well, I mean, it is exciting. I mean, it's great, really. From all of us, congratulations.
Thank you.
I feel like our segment on great things are happening. It's just, I mean, I don't need to say much more. At this time, I would invite down again Mrs. Camper, who's going to tell you about a special project with our neighbors at Lake Erie College. And it's a great partnership and she's going to tell you more about this amazing project that just culminated here at Paintsville City. So welcome to our friends at Lake Erie.
Just to, do you have a little background? Do you want to share the backgrounds?
That's you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, I was invited, myself and Heidi Feinberg, invited to speak at a course at Lake Erie College. And I'm going to let Brittany share kind of the story of what happened and what an amazing accomplishment the students at Lake Erie connected with our students in Paintsville City. It's all a shit.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Camper and the board for inviting us. This is a huge honor for a college kid. A little bit of premise about the class. Most of us that were in it were educators. We also had a poly-sci major. And we just, the whole premise was to learn how to get into a community, to learn what was most important to them and how to best serve their needs. So to do that, naturally, we were going to try to practice on you guys. We interviewed, interviewed, visited with eight different groups in the Paintsville area and really learned about what was important to this community. We fell in love with the book box. Everybody, after Heidi Fife left, I don't know if they're good speakers or if it was just a good pause, I'm pretty sure it's the second one, but we fell in love with the book box. And you know, being teachers, most of us, it was something really important to us to try to push literacy and help that sort of area. So we basically caucus and figure out how best to help. We figured that we were going to do a book fair, a scholastic book fair with a family night, and all of those proceeds would be able to go to purchasing new books. And in addition to that, we decided to collect some donated books as well. Our goal for donated books was 50 over spring break. We had about 200 when we came back from spring break and we ended up with about 2,000. So a little bit more than 50. That was pretty cool. And then we also had a family night open to Paintsville City and we had a pretty good turnout for that. We were really proud. We sold $2,100 from our book fair. Our goal was 1,500. And we were able to buy $800 worth of books. There was also an online fair, which we just got the numbers back from that, actually. We were able to buy a little more than $100 for more books for you guys. So we're really proud of that. I would like to take time to just say the names of the students in the class, if that's all right. So we have Brooke Yocko, Becca Dietz, Michael Poole, Brandon Teske, Nadia Lee, Roberta Benedict, Chris Trubiani, Amanda Short, Gillian Frye, and Leanne Reed. On behalf of myself and my class, Lake Erie College, we would like to thank you guys.
All we can say is thank you to you both and thank you to all the students and the people who supported Lake Erie College in this endeavor with us. If you're not familiar with our book box, this is our year two. We follow our district lunchbox through our neighborhoods in Paintsville City in the summer. It is truly a book swap intended to just bring books into the families and into our homes in Paintsville City. And with support like this, we should have an outstanding summer. So we thank you very much for everything that you did. Much appreciated.
And also want to give a shout out to Mrs. Hannah Fairbanks, who is their instructor at Lake Erie College and a familiar face, and a familiar face to us here at Paintsville City. So we always appreciate that ongoing relationship with the college as well as Brittany. You're very impressive.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you in the education field soon. I take it those are your parents. They should be very proud of you. She was very organized and was really like emailing me and she even stopped by and did a person-to-person visit, which is impressive. So kudos to you.
They would call that naggy. I'm glad you call that.
I was very impressed by her tenacity. No, she's outstanding and again to you, Mrs. Fairbanks, thank you so much. And we will be sure to extend that thank you to the college to share with the rest of the class. So thank you, Brittany.
We're not going to need a bigger book box, are we?
No.
We might need a wagon.
We might need more storage at the board office.
There you go.
Keeping all the books, but the book box will be fine.
Okay.
Will be.
Thank you so much.
All right, new business. Our next regular meeting will be on June 12, 2017, here in James Diller Board Room at Onto the legislative report. There, most of the bills that I talked about last month, there really hasn't been much change, except for the Bioneo Budget Bill, of course. The House passed that on May 2nd and moved it over to the Senate. Mr. Shepherd, Dr. Engelhardt, and I were at the all-board meeting last week and there were a couple of presentations regarding kind of legislative update and discussion about really the Board of Education and State Board of Education, or the Department of Education and the State Board of Education. Main concern expressed certainly relating to the budget was some of the changes and cuts that are affecting a lot of school districts across the state. And a big piece of it seemed to be the relation of the reimbursement of the tangible property, tangible personal property tax, you know, when they shifted over and, you know, schools lost those taxes, the schools that had them, and then got reimbursement. And that funding is getting cut. A lot of the quote-unquote wealthier districts are losing significant amount of funding from the state because of that and other positions within the bill. So there is some concern and there's certainly growing lobbying efforts taking place to try and offset some of those losses. For PCLS, it doesn't have that much of an impact. You know, whether you want to say it's good or not, it's kind of a, it's good that we're not losing funding, but the reason we're not losing funding is because of our community's economic conditions. So anyway. As far as the State Board and the Department of Education, the presentation focused a lot about around the development and continuing efforts to form and submit a plan by the state to the federal government in response to the requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was signed, you know, by President Obama last year. There are certain filing requirements from each state. They have to develop a plan and whatnot. It appears that those deadlines for submittal are being extended and the state is taking full advantage of that. So what impact that has on the district is not really clear right now. I don't know, do you want to say anything further about the all-board meeting or anything else?
No, I think it's a worthwhile evening. The format was a little different this year in that we didn't have breakout sessions. And I felt like the evening, sometimes when you have a breakout session, and I know, I just only was there last year, it was, it was kind of very informative and you had some...
It was important.
Yeah, we had some questions answered in that type of format. This year, it seemed like maybe we were a little behind schedule and we'll kind of rush through it. But other than that, I think just hearing some of the anxiety surrounding the Bioneo Budget as well as the struggles within the state and OTE, it was just reassuring that we're on the right track here. So for me, it was kind of reaffirming that we're, we're luckier than most.
Yeah, no, conversations, Chardon is losing somewhere between 10 and 15% of their funding. Wickliffe is getting hit pretty hard and they were asking, standing up and asking a lot of questions of Tony Fadajil and, you know, why is this happening? Why is that happening? What can we do? That type of thing. And there was a fair amount of nodding heads and all of that around the table as these questions were coming up. You know, it, it makes for an interesting situation and I think I would certainly affirm what John just said about we're in a very fortunate position financially. And we need to make sure that we take full advantage of that and show that we're worthy of it. Any questions? No? All right. Item 7, Treasurer's Consent Agenda. We need a motion to approve this item.
Sumo.
Second.
Powers, only, Ms. Remington? Ms. Seemick, do you want to kind of go through any of these or?
7.1 are the donations. 7.2 is about your forecast. So the fall forecast is required in October and then the same forecast is required to be submitted in May. And now we have the budget bill in which, so in the fall, we had an unknown. We didn't know what the next four years of forecast were going to bring to us. And the budget bill has been revised three times now. And the latest revision is reflected in the forecast and it is to our favor. We are getting additional funding in '18 and additional on top of that on '19. So with the latest revision, we're getting almost close to $10 million in the length of the forecast. So I take the revenue for '18 and '19 and then I straight-line that for '20 and '21. So '20 and '21 is an unknown. We kind of just, we don't increase, we don't decrease, we just flat-line that for the rest of the forecast. The majority of our revenue does come from the budget bill, so that kind of makes us a little unique than Sam Perry, who relies on their property taxes for the revenue. So that was the big swift change in our forecast. In the fall, we were negative. Now we're positive, basically due to the budget bill. Couple other factors that played into account were our health care came in a little bit below. We have our rates already for next year. We forecasted seven, they came in at 5% for next year. The workers' comp, the billion back, we're getting additional revenue for that next year. And then all of like the purchase services, supplies, equipment, all that that are out to my principals and to all my departments, everybody came in under budget. So in the fall, I budgeted for max, thinking they're all going to spend every last penny, but they're very good with their money and I tell them, spend it like their own and they're very, very good with that. And so everybody kind of came in under budget. And again, it's kind of like how I do my revenue. I kind of take what we spend this year and that's kind of my base for building my next four years, plus or minus any major changes that we kind of have. So that was the, those factors kind of made the forecast look really, really good. Next year is our last year of renewing contract and then after that, we're back to negotiations. So I don't have any percentage on the base, but I do have steps from my teachers in there.
And the finance committee had a chance to meet and you've covered everything that we've talked about in there.
Yeah.
But the whole thing, as we all agree on, we're in much better shape than a lot of every districts around us.
Absolutely.
I have a comment and I just wanted you to thank Sheri for her hard work on the forecast because it's an ever-changing target, or moving target, I should say, all the time. And also to our building principals and our staff for being fiscally sound. So I do appreciate all your hard work and when you do get a moment to read through each of her revenues and her sources and such, it's a lot of work. And if you don't understand school finance, it's hard to explain, but Ms. Seemick has a bulletin board in her office that really explains it quite well, which is unique. And I can say after 31 years, I've never seen one like it and it helps me a lot. So really, congratulations to Sheri for keeping us on track financially. It's a hard task when you're dealing with all the kids that we have to deal with. I'm talking about us, the staff and administration. But she keeps us on target and keeps us focused on, on the bottom line and that's being fiscally sound. So we appreciate your work.
Black and human mom, if you have any kids?
I pretty much am a mom, yes, I am.
Okay.
So Jeff, in light of your comment about Sheri stole your thunder, are you not going to say anything later?
She covered it all here now. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, then I'm going to say something about the financials because you said on the finance committee report that we still need a lobby. And since I've been drafted to be the walking campaign chairperson, I did meet, not meet, I did talk to Jan Klaire from the Board of Elections. She will be giving us a walking list. I would suggest that we walk in July and again in September because a lot of people vote early. They'll be voting in October. So how do I go about recruiting staff? What can I legally do to recruit staff? Because I'd like staff, parents, kids, and us.
We will send you a kind of an outline of what we need to do to make those steps, just so, we like to have it in writing. It'll be very simple. Heidi Fife has, is in charge of our finances. She oversees that and the filing of such. So we'll send you out a packet and we can get started and get those things on the calendar so we can announce them.
But we can recruit staff before the end of the year because...
Most definitely.
Okay. And how do we do that?
Well, there's a person in the back of the room there who could probably help us out with, with at least our certified staff.
Sorry, we got videotaped, we can play it back.
And I'm sure Scott would be more than happy to get you the list. And he can send out anything on behalf of the committee because it's not school-related. So he can send that out on our behalf as well as, we'll have the same with...
But I cannot send it out.
Correct. And Mr. Gilbert will send that out on behalf of the OPC staff. So we'll get you both those and whatever you want to send out, we'll send to those gentlemen and they'll make sure that it gets out to all the staff. And they have a calling tree as well that they utilize. Thank you, Scott.
For volunteering.
Yeah, just look.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Seemick, if you can call the board.
Ms. Powers, only?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Ms. Christel?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Tekken?
Yes.
Item 8, Treasurer's Non-Auction Items.
Same old thing, month after month. 8.1, 8.5, and monthly financials from the previous month. Blah, 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 blah.
Item 9, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. We need a motion to approve this agenda as listed?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Who made the motion, Devin?
I did.
Okay.
It's okay.
I wasn't sure either. Hearing none, Mr. Shepherd, if you want to go through these?
Sure, most definitely. 9.1, we have disposals and you'll notice in those disposals, there is a file attachment. We were going to write them all out, but that's a lot of stuff to write out because we have Chromebook disposals. They've, Mr. Shade has done a great job getting those disposed of properly and making sure the list of Chromebooks is attached and a company will be taking those and doing whatever it is with it, but those all are tagged. 9.2, we have a PCTA, Memorandum of Understanding. Our vision benefits did change, so we have a Memorandum of Understanding with not only PCTA in 9.2, but 9.3 with our OPC. Our vision did change and for the better. So we are very appreciative that now we have a, a vision plan that is uniform across the consortium that Paintsville City belongs, but also with a little better benefits at no extra cost to either the district or...
What is that called again?
July 1.
July 1. I fought for it though, so we're not getting jipped. They want to do frames every other. I said, I don't think so.
Trust me, I was the messenger. I had to go back and tell them.
Well, we have frames everywhere. So I think this needs to be open for everybody, so.
So we do appreciate them working with us on this. 9.4, we have another Memorandum of Understanding to replace our electrician with the OPC Union as well as another Memorandum of Understanding extending the contract for head mechanic. We have this time in 9.6, our Lake County Educational Service Center HR Service Agreement. This is when we use their services. It is written out very thoroughly and it changed a little bit, so that's why it's on here, as well as our Lake County Educational Service Center Program Service Agreement. Both contracts are required for us to use the services at ESC. 9.8 is our LEAF Contract Service Agreement for '17-'18. You know that LEAF is the service we use to help students with their college-bound pursuits. And finally, 9.9, ReEd Service Agreement, again, providing transportation for students in special ed.
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. Head mechanic. Trying to remember, it's been a couple of years since we put that position back in place and we stopped the contracted service. Is that a shared, don't we share that with someone else?
We do.
Is it a loose agreement? How does that work?
It's not, not a loose agreement in that depending on the amount of work, all the mechanics for Paintsville City are done within Paintsville City.
Right.
If our friends at Perry need some work or Riverside, we will extend that for them as well. It's kind of a shared agreement that we have with them. But... It's kind of a shared agreement that we have with them, but mostly our body shop stuff is done out of Perry.
That's what it was.
Right. So it is just continuing that agreement with them, but with the person, he's moving from class eight to class nine.
Well, that was my question, right? I mean, as you start paying someone, is there salary increases?
Yes.
Do we share that amongst the other districts that?
Ours was lower compared to the other districts, so we're catching up a little bit.
Okay.
But to answer your question, yes, we have to pay a little bit more.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Seemick, if you could call the role first.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolny?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Item ten, superintendent's non-action items.
Yes, 10.1, committee report from finance. I think Mrs. Seemick did a tremendous job explaining that. Mr. Powers, I mean, the presentation you put together, Mr. Powers, is outstanding of this PowerPoint-type presentation, so I appreciate that. As well as 10.2 is a policy update and I will put Mr. Powers on the spot with this policy update because it does involve a slight change in how we approach handguns on, on school property, so.
Yeah, the new policy goes to the concealed carry thing with, where they're extending it into people who are licensed or in the scope of their duties to be able to use, carry onto school property. While it still severely limits a lot of areas as far as where you can and cannot do it, it does give us, I hate to say us, but it does give people the opportunity to carry under some extended circumstances that they did not have before.
And that extends to employees?
Well.
Does it extend to repo guy coming to take a car? Where, where does it?
That's a really good question because it's very open enough to interpretation. You can carry it onto school property such as special circumsta, like basketball games, football games and stuff like that.
With security.
Security, yes. However, it does not, in the scope of the school, there should be no coming into the school during those regular hours.
Okay.
Someone coming onto the property should be following all the rules and expectations of the school policy and the state law if they're trying to come on during regular school hours.
Which is not entering the building.
Yes.
Are we posting that?
Yes.
Yes.
We already have it posted, but we will have to repost under the new.
Right.
Criteria.
There's no question.
Right. There'll be new stickers.
Yes, everybody's in the process deciding, many county agencies, whether they're going to allow people to do this or not and, you know, so there's much debate in many different offices as how they're going to look at this. So we have our first reading on this, so.
In 10, our 10.3, district culture and climate. In front of you, there is a bag. This week is celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. We are using this time to celebrate teacher and staff appreciation in so many different ways. So this is a, this is your gift from yourself to yourself, but in light of celebration this week, we have several activities going on. Last week, there's a little bit of confusion. Let me just explain it. Because the first full week of May is typically Teacher Appreciation Week, the day did not, Sunday was not the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, so Sunday, May 1st didn't exist this year, so it got pushed back. But if you bought your calendar like I did at Mark's, it was incorrectly put on the calendar. So we had some celebration. We're taking two weeks to celebrate this year at Paintsville City, but we appreciate everything our staff and our teachers do. And it's a small token of our appreciation for each and every day that they serve our children. Tomorrow, we have a little surprise for them. Mr. Pacheco put together a video and we're going to debut it tonight, but we can't really get it to work and, and because Ms. DeAngelis has the copy on her computer, so. But it is uploaded and ready to go on the website tomorrow, so when you wake up tomorrow, please click on and you'll see our students and some of them will be very familiar to you, thanking a teacher for all they have done. So we have been celebrating throughout the week and we do know that it is focused on teachers, but each of us teach in so many different ways, whether you're a board member, a bus mechanic, nutrition services worker, we're all teachers and that's the message we want to convey to our staff that we do appreciate each and everything you do. And thank you, Scott, for being the one teacher out in the audience. We appreciate that. And know that tomorrow, the treats will be delivered and thank you for your hard work and dedication to our students.
All right. There any other? Way on the, we'll deal with that later. Item 11, personnel. Mr. Shepherd?
Sure. Hopefully.
Well, yeah, let's make a motion for, need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Personnel item.
Second.
Now, Mr. Shepherd.
Sure. 11.1, we have retirements and resignations. Our guest teacher from Spain will be returning to Spain after the three years, so she's on there as well. We wish her, and congratulate her for her job well done. We also have some retirements listed there. Our next is 11.2, employments. 11.3, change of assignments. 11.4, employment for summer school. 11.5, extended time. 11.6, leaves. 11.7, stipends. 11.8, class size reimbursement. 11.9, which is a long one, through 119 salary column change for 17, 18 school year. 11.10, our non-renewal. 11.11, renew certified staff contracts and set salaries. 11.12, new and renewed continuing and probationary contracts and set salaries of classified staff. 11.13, certified substitutes. 11.14, classified substitutes. And 11.15, supplemental pupil activity recommendations.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Seemick, if you could call the role first.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolny?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Item 12, professional visits.
11.12, professional visits taken from the general fund and 12.2, professional visits taken from grant funding.
We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Ms. Remington?
Second.
Mr. Costello? One quick question, under professional visits from the general fund, the CSU Career Day, is that a recruiting trip by assume?
Yeah.
Do we have a, an, an agenda or a strategy on who we're looking for or we're just looking for whoever we get?
Yeah, we, we have a process. We have lots of, lots of applicants for our openings, so we have a process, a screening, multi-tiered system of screening and yes, there are particular things we're looking for.
So do you have a list of people that you're meeting with who have already applied or?
Yeah, so I've screened, I've screened about 60 candidates so far and I've recommended, based on those, I've recommended, you know, a set of four or five candidates on to either Chris Young in the instance of a special ed hire or it's the building principal to put together an interview team for the second round. I'm hoping to have recommendations for most of our vacancies by the end of the month. We're, we're on track for that. And, and yes, we have good candidates coming through. We've got some, some tough decisions to make on, on a few of these positions because there's quality candidates.
Good, great. Any other questions or comments? Seemick, if you could call the role first.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolny?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Item 13, hearing from the public on non-agenda items.
Looks blank again.
Public, yeah. I haven't gotten to read that thing for a long time.
Careful what you wish for.
I know. All right. Item 14, PCLS, good things are happening. Recognizing positive moments and/or events.
Well, I'll start out by saying it is a busy time of year for all of us, but it's probably like harvest time, if you, if you want to call it, for lack of a better term, because we get to see all the amazing things our staff and our students have done throughout the year, whether it's a, a simple invite to a statue thing that they're doing at one of our elementary schools or if it's one of the commenating concerts, which we have our last one next week, one tomorrow night as well. It's amazing the amount of activity that our students and our staff participate in throughout the year. It's really heartwarming to see that and it makes celebrating staff appreciation so much more rewarding because we see, you know, not everyone gets to see in their job the end product and we'll get to see that during graduation, during the, all the different award ceremonies. So we're very fortunate in, in that. And so for me, that's the positive moments and/or events, too numerous to name, but we know that our students are doing well, so we're, I'm very proud of them.
Well, I'm not going to be shy, I'm going to name a few. Mostly because my daughter and son are involved in a lot of them, so a little bit of pride and father bragging, but, you know, as I would imagine, most of you know, the school musical did extremely well in the Lake County Rotary Awards. Won best musical, best lead actress, best lead supporting actors, yes, supporting, no, sub-supporting actor.
Sub-supporting.
Best male supporting actor, best male sub-supporting actor. And Lila Kalina won the Rotary, one of the two Rotary scholarships, so Harvey had a field day at the Rotary this year and they really did a fantastic job. And, and I hesitate to, to say this next part because I know there's a lot of people that deserve recognition that, that may not get it and I just don't know who they are, but I really would like to, to spend a moment and, and say congratulations and a thank you to, to Ms. Kim Hildak, not just for the musical, but, you know, we were at the choir concert last week and she has done so much with the choirs, not just at the high school, but at the, at the middle school as well, which is, you know, same thing as sports. You build a feeding system to grow the talent and the sooner you get in there and there's a whole host of, of the music teachers and art teachers at the elementary level who are building that excitement for these kids. And, you know, we had this year at the choir concert, they had the, the young men do a piece kind of based on a barbershop quartet training that they had gotten where, you know, a, a community barbershop quartet came in and taught them a lot about it and, and, you know, they were excited about it. It's not, you know, it's not just that they're, they're doing it like, okay, she dragged me into this. I mean, they're excited about it and, and it's great to see that. And, and the communities, not just our community, but I mean, the other communities, when we go to the choir festivals and all that, they're always impressed, you know, for the last four or five years when we've gone, you know, they've been, the other communities and the other kids are always impressed with what our choirs are doing. Some of it's jealous because we did cool stuff and they have to do the old buddy-daddy stuff, but semi-jokes.
It's true.
But, you know, and it was also nice to see her pursuing a little more formal choral, you know, some of the more traditional choral stuff as well, giving them a broad range. So I just, she really works hard and as, you know, all the teachers do, I'm not, I'm not trying to single her out, but I am, just because I, I really appreciate the effort that she gives to the kids and the care and commitment beyond the school because she's actively involved in, in the, both the, the county or the, the district and regional music educators association and, and she's getting involved in, in there from a, dealing with, with race issues and, and some of that now she's kind of been tapped to, to lead that effort. So I, it, I just really appreciate her commitment and, and the commitment of her husband too because he's as much of a staff member here as, as she is, to tell you the truth. And, you know, Mr. Johnson is, is just fantastic, so just a shout out to them. Have I stole all the oxygen now?
Yeah.
I have one more that I wanted to point out and again, it's about Harvey, but we have yet another student from FBLA and East City Programming that is going on to another summer program. Speaking of amazing things, that, that, those, both those programs have highlighted Harvey High School, Paintsville City schools in so many different ways. I don't know how many schools across the country would be sending 20-plus students to California for a national competition. Not a common occurrence, so again, we just had another, we try to keep up with them, but now seems to, Ms. Rapor seems to email us every week, which is exciting because our students are getting opportunities on college campuses that I could have only dreamed about, you know, at, at their age. So again, another program that's outstanding, not only for our students, but for our community. So again, a shout out to, to both of them and we'll have another list and thank you, Mr. Pacheco, for putting all those all on the website. And I know that, I think you're traveling with them, aren't you?
Yeah.
So we'll get a lot of good PR out there, so. I think she tricked you into chaperoning, but. So again, just amazing things happening around the school district, so we appreciate your support.
One other thing, I guess, before we go, and this is semi-school related, but, you know, the American Legion every year sends or recommends and sends people, young boys and girls to boys state, girls state. This year, we have four students from the high school going, you know, they decided they were just going to send all four of the candidates they had instead of picking two or three of them, so. And that's exciting and, you know, certainly, everything I've heard about that program just consistently amazes me, not just the excitement of, of the, the kids feel as they go, but I mean, just, you know, Ohio apparently has the best boys state program in the country and they're going to have, there's a day where universities and colleges come in and, and basically do recruiting and offer, you know, it gets serious from what I hear. So I mean, it's, it's a big deal and, and they felt, the local legion posted and felt very strongly that, that four of our guys, and I haven't heard anything about any, anyone going from, from the girl's side, but I'd just like to say thank you to the American Legion and all the effort that they do to support our kids that way.
1980 Buckeye Boys State, representative of Cambridge High School. Thank you. No, it is an amazing program because just to learn about, it's sort of, it's very similar to what Ms. Rapor does with, with business. It's very similar in that regard, or if you've done United Model or United Nations Model, UN, it is very similar and what our students leave there with may prompt them into a career in, in government or in politics. So I know if you know Mr. Kumiyari, he worked many years in, in Columbus before he moved on to, I think, private industry now. And he, I believe, was Buckeye Boys State representative from Harvey High School and was a legislative page and advisor in Columbus for many years, so it just goes to show you don't know where it'll take you.
If no one else has anything else, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Well, since, I'm assuming that's the motion that we adjourned.
We were assuming that was what your motion was leading to.
Ms. Powers Doni?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Gustav?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I have to get in my costume. I'm not saying anymore. Please, no one come to the show.